Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Following Governor Inslee's statewide mask mandate, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individuals is unable to comply with the order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met and the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting will either be recessed and reconvened only virtually or be adjourned. Agenda packets are available on the City Pasco's website Please note that the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live at PSC-TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present.
All seven accounted for, Mayor.
Thank you. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There is no separate discussion on these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda and considered separately. Item A: Approval of Meeting Minutes. To approve the minutes of Pasco City Council Regular Meeting and Regular Workshop held on February 7, 2022, and February 14, 2022. Item B: Bills and Communications. To approve claims in the total amount of $4,626,316.76 $968.96 and $167.88 in electronic transfers, $3,946 in checks, $858,529.15 in electronic transfers. To approve bad debt write-off for utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous accounts, and municipal court for noncriminal, criminal, and parking accounts receivable in the total amount of $277,023.17, and of that amount authorized zero to be turned over for collection. Item C: Resolution. Ortho-photomapping intergovernmental agreement to approve Resolution Number 4151, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Benton County for aerial photography and ortho-photomapping of areas within the city of Pasco. And with that, can I hear a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
A second?
Moved by Mayor Protem Maloney and seconded by Councilwoman Torres.
Can we get a roll call? Councilmember Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Ye- yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
And Barajas.
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And we move on to Item 5: Proclamations and Acknowledgements. None listed. We move on to Item 6: Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions may be best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And with that, do we have any comments from anyone in our audience? Would you like to approach the podium? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, council. My name is Mark Middleton. I live at 4206 Sahara Drive. And what I am approaching about is my wife and I live in Pasco. We love living in Pasco. My family's lived here our whole lives. And I purchased my property, and it has an ADU on it. We purchased it four years ago, and I began using it as an Airbnb. It had a 95% occupancy rate. It was a very great way to host people who are visiting our city. However, I did not know I was in violation of city code. And I got an email last year by Rochelle Strater, who is a code enforcement officer, who told me, "I cannot be doing this. It is illegal in our code," which I was surprised by because I had a rental license. And so I pursued it further, spoke to Rochelle Johnson, who's our lead code enforcement officer. She said, "Yes, it is the truth. It is Code PMC 3.10.010, which says you cannot rent something for under 30 days." In our code, that means you are a hotel or a lodging facility. And so I stopped doing that and emailed Dave Zabel, as well as Rick White, who said, "The ultimate decision is the city council," which is why I'm here today, is to ask the council. With the times that we're in, the city of Kennewick and the city of Richland also have allowed for Airbnbs, I would advise and ask the council to change this code to allow for more people to visit our great city and for residents like myself to have an additional income to be able to utilize their home in a way to host people visiting our city. So with that, that is my request of the council to look at this code and to visit that again and change it to be able to accommodate more people visiting our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other guests present wishing to make a comment? And we do have Sherri Eisen on the line. Sherri Eisen?
And Madam Mayor, I believe she wishes to speak on an item, actually the next item on our agenda, the endorsement of nomination.
No further comment from anyone in our audience? Okay. And with that, we move on to Item 7: Reports From Committees and/or Officers. Mayor Protem Maloney and then Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Yeah, I have two items to report. Last week, on last Tuesday, there was a Public Facilities District meeting. So they're continuing to move forward and make sure they fully understand the project that they put in front of the voters on April 26. They appointed a pro and con committee at that last meeting. And so those are the folks that will write the ballot language, the ballot guide language, both in support of and opposed from. And that is, of course, distinct from any sort of lobbying campaign or anything else that would be raising and spending money. So that project continues to move forward. And the other item I'd like to report is, I've had over the last week and a half an opportunity to testify on the City of Pasco's behalf for both in front of the House Transportation Committee and the Senate Transportation Committee. And what that's looking for is one of our priority projects, which is looking at multimodal transportation over the Sylvester Street overpass over 395. So obviously, it's a pretty dangerous intersection right now if you're walking or riding a bike. There is basically, there's virtually no shoulder, and it is a darn near blind turn when you're getting on from 395 there. So I don't know that this will be very successful. The priority projects all seem to be on the west side of the state, predominantly in the Puget Sound area. But, you know, just giving it the best job we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll keep mine brief because mine has a lot to do with what Mayor Protem Maloney just mentioned. I sat with Good Roads. We talked a little bit. We were lucky enough to have Senator Perry Dozier join us, and he basically said the same thing. He was kind of surprised that we didn't have a lot of funding on big projects on the eastern side of the state. But overall, we discussed a lot of things about like intermodal transportation, walkability inside cities, future-wise, put together presentation on some of their proposed plans for not just Pasco, but Benton Franklin and some of the surrounding areas as a whole. It was just a good conversation. But again, surprised that right now legislature's not providing a lot of funding for big projects on the east side.
I also just have a quick update. I attended the DPDA, which is the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, meeting last week. The committee continues to meet Tuesdays at 8:30 a.m. for the Cinco de Mayo. If anyone would like to volunteer, they are always seeking volunteers. So if you're listening out there and you would want an opportunity to volunteer, there you go. Also, save the date. Peanuts Park Grand Opening is March 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, I will ask the two gentlemen in our audience to please wear your masks. We do have the mandate. If you do not have a mask, there's some out in the hallway. Thank you for that. No further reports from any of our council members? Councilwoman Roach or Councilmember Serrano?
No report from me. Thanks for asking.
Done here. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to Item B: Endorsements of Nomination Naval Air Station, Pasco Tower, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And we do have Ms. Sherri Eisen. Director White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item concerns the city's endorsement of the nomination of Melin Bergstrom for her efforts for at least the last 10 years in the massive task of cleaning, restoring, and remodeling the historically significant naval air station. And the Chair, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, Dan Stafford, is here to give council a brief presentation on that nomination and some historical photos.
Perfect. Thank you.
I guess we're supposed to identify ourselves, even though I think we covered that. I'm Dan Stafford, and you are?
Melin Bergstrom.
The presentation pretty much consists of me reading a letter. But anyway, it says, "Dear Mayor Barajas, the Columbia River Chapter National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution has approached the city of Pasco for a National Society Award endorsement of Ms. Melin Bergstrom for her admirable historic preservation efforts of the historic Naval Air Station Pasco Air Traffic Control Tower and Museum." It's a lot easier to use NAS. "The nomination endorsement request was forwarded to the city's Historic Preservation Commission for review and recommendation. Melin has served faithfully on the city's Historic Preservation Commission for several years now, and is highly regarded by her fellow commissioners. She began the NAS Pasco Tower renovation during her tenure on the commission and has periodically reported her progress to the commission. In 2012, Ms. Bergstrom founded the Save the Old NAS Pasco Control Tower nonprofit organization with the intent of restoring this historic building, preserving local WWII Navy history, and honoring the greatest generation. Over the last nine or so years, she has raised awareness, secured funding and donations, organized work teams, and personally shouldered the lion's share of the work of bringing the NAS Pasco Control Tower back to life as a marvelous historic showpiece and museum. The City of Pasco Historic Preservation Commission eagerly recommends city council's endorsement of the Columbia River Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution nomination of Melin Bergstrom for a National Society Daughters of the American Revolution Award for her formidable historic preservation achievements. Best regards, Historic Preservation Commission."
Thank you.
Struggling through it. Would you like to show off your major award?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for the council and staff for the opportunity to be a part of this presentation. I was able to attend a Daughters of the American Revolution meeting, and they awarded the certificate at that time, just last weekend. So it is an honor to receive that. Along with the certificate, I got to receive a medal, which is my first medal ever. So that was very thoughtful and a wonderful honor, pointing out that the city of Pasco and our citizens here are interested and willing to go the extra mile to take care of our history, to save it, to preserve it. Our Historic Preservation Commission, Dan included, has done a wonderful job in keeping that history alive and sharing it with the community. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you ever get the chance to come out to the museum, we are reopening in April, and we would love to host any of the council members or the staff for a private tour or any tour to see what's going on out there at the historic building. It's amazing. If you can just wait just a second, I think we have some questions for you. From Campos. Sorry. Councilwoman Campos.
Congratulations. This is really cool. Could you explain a little bit about what the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution is? I heard it first. I was doing some genealogy on my own family, and I think I've got ancestors that go back to the first colonists on the east side. So could you maybe explain a little bit, give some of our audience a little bit of detail there?
Absolutely. The Daughters of the American Revolution was established in the 1800s. Oh, excuse me. Was established in the 1800s. And the organization has chapters all across North America, and they are preserving and acknowledging the history through genealogy. So members of the Daughters of the American Revolution are able to trace back to some very important figures in our past history, not only just the American Revolution, but several other. There's some of the members that can say that they're related to George Washington and a very, very important genealogy work that they're doing. So it's, they're tied right into historic preservation through that way, and that's why the award is a very thoughtful thing for them to do.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Well, Mr. Stafford, Ms. Bergstrom, thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate, and congratulations again on your award, your medal. Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Okay. And moving to Item C. Director Sigdahl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The staff report in front of you is our General Fund Monthly Report. And this one is significant, as in it closes out as of December 2021. And overall, we're still actually doing some entries in the Finance Department as we're preparing our annual report, which usually takes up most of Finance Department's time for the first quarter. But overall, I'm happy to report that we're doing really well with our revenues and our expenses as well. Of course, this is a biennial report, and so you will expect another year. And many times, we are, with the pandemic, of course, and the supply chain issues, things like that, we're always conservative about how we spend our expenses, especially in the first year, and this being our second biennial budget. So next year, we're planning to, we have some big plans that if come to fruition, you will see a little bit of a flip on what you're seeing right now on revenues versus expenses. We've got some big land purchases and some transfers to other funds to facilitate some other activities, especially land purchases, which are important for a growing city, but also fairly expensive, as everybody is aware. And at this time, we're really happy to see strong revenue, especially in sales tax, and we're hoping that that will continue. And strong license and permitting activity as well, that we are anticipating that it'll continue in that trend as well. And with that, if you have any questions?
Any questions? Mayor Protem Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you, Director Sigdahl. I just wanted to focus on, I guess, the last slide in this report, and we're talking about the ARPA list. It's been a few months since we've had any conversation, update on that. I know a number of the projects are pretty eagerly awaited by our community. And so I guess I'd like to just understand broadly, no specific items here, but broadly, what are our next steps to make sure we're continuing to allocate the federal funding that we've been granted to make sure it gets to the community as quickly as possible?
Yes, we are still looking through some of the projects of major interest, and especially with the final rule that we received about, I want to say, a month ago. Things are clarified a lot more than they have been in the past. So with that, we are looking for especially the life safety portion that we've been discussing with council and the fact that with the final rule, that is, it's looking like ARPA funds are not something that we can utilize for that effort. We're trying to go, wait for an engineer's report, Mr. Klein's report, to see what comes out of that in terms of needs of the community and present that report with, of course, our own write-up to the granting agency, which would be the Department of Treasury. So we're waiting on that, and that will be, depending on what comes out of that, that will be a really big chunk of expenses, if allowed. And that will impact the rest of the pool. So at this time, we're focusing on that and wrapping it up and hoping for a good outcome. And some of our water and sewer projects are also starting at this point, something that council policy-wise has told us we can move forward with that. And that leaves us with about, don't quote me on this, but around $3 to $4 million of leftover funding. And we do have Martin Luther King Center and some of the other projects that are duly needed that we are, that is on the plate. So we're looking for that one big piece, and we want to see where that falls before we move forward. But if council would like to have the discussion outside of that major project, we can definitely come back and talk about the remaining funding and where it can be allocated. I would also like to add that we have, sorry, we have Chamber of Commerce, Pasco Chamber of Commerce, coming back next week to present on the Business Assistance Program and the lessons learned from that, and a path forward as well. And council's direction next week will also give us some room or at least a direction on how we want to move forward with some of the funds there.
I guess in preparation for that, Director Sigdahl, this table isn't by itself enough for me to understand exactly how much we've, you know, we'll say allocated, how much we've committed to various projects and such. So I'm not sure I can get to how much of a balance we have to potentially allocate. So I'd hate to go in unprepared. So if there's going to be questions, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, the Pasco Chamber of Commerce coming back in, I'd love to know more exactly what that number looks like when you're talking about commitments built into that as well.
Yeah, that is a good point. I will revise that and send it to our council.
Thank you. And then the other comment would be, I know one of the major items in downtown that was discussed as part of the downtown master planning is, how do we deal with the homelessness and, you know, substance abuse and other mental health? And I know that that's a number of items on this list here, but I really haven't heard much in months, how, where the rest is going and where we're strategically, what staff's recommending with that. I know that staff is working hard on that. I know Chief Gere has taken a role in that. And I'd love to get an update of that as part of that, to understand how can we, that will be a major impact on the vitality of our downtown if we can allocate those funds in a way that will benefit folks in need. So appreciate, just appreciate a little more depth and clarity on that before we make decisions. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Any further comment from any of our council members? Councilwoman Roach and Councilmember Serrano?
No good here.
Thank you.
Nothing here. Thank you.
Perfect. Let me just get back to my agenda. All right. With no further comment, we will move on to Item 8: Hearings and Council Action on Ordinances and Resolutions Related There. Two, none listed. Item 9: Ordinances and Resolutions Not Relating to Hearings. Item A: Ordinance Amending the PMC to Establish a Fiduciary Fund for the Receipt and Transmitting of Funds to the Administrative Office of Courts. Director Sigdahl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very administrative request. We do have a new GASB, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and a lot of the rules around local government accounting is set by GASB. And more often than I would like, they come up with new pronouncements and new accounting rules. And this is something that has been on the books, I think, for the last three, four years. However, we've never needed it because usually how GASB works is they look at the fiscal year overall. So the timing-wise, we've never needed to create a fiduciary account for collecting all of the municipal fines and fees that are supposed to go to AOC. And so usually what happens is we collect those fees. We know exactly how much is supposed to go to AOC. We write the check, and the transactions happen, you know, every month. Particularly in this year's case, there was a day or two of delay. So those, how much we collected for December, and then when we cut the check, was in January. So it crossed two fiscal years. And so we need to create a fund just to keep it for a day, essentially, so that our accounting and reporting happens as per the GASB standards. So what we're requesting at this time is the creation of the fund, which requires council approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from our council? Councilwoman Roach? Thank you. Any questions or comments from our council? Councilwoman Roach, Councilmember Serrano, any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Just saying, thanks for asking, Mayor.
Okay. Hearing none. Mayor Pretam, can we get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four, five, eight, zero, establishing a fiduciary fund for the receipt and transmittal of the funds to the Administrative Office of Courts, creating a new chapter, three dot two, three, seven Administrative Office and of the Courts Fund of the PMC, and further authorize publication by summary only.
I'll second that.
I have a motion set by Mayor Pretam Maloney and seconded by Councilwoman Roach. And, uh, we don't need to go roll call through this, correct? Just a voice vote. All in favor, I am so sorry. This COVID is still hitting me. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. And moving to item B, resolutions, project acceptances. Several items, item one, PWRF irrigation pump station, number two, Columbia East Force Main, number three, Greenway connection to Columbia East, and number four, PWRF pipe modifications. Director Worley.
Mayor, if I could kick this off, and good evening, Mayor Council. So, tonight Kent McHugh is our construction project manager, is going to talk to us tonight about the specific projects, but I do want to note that for council and the public, of course, you hear about these projects, you award the bids, some of these are pretty significant, you have an eight million dollar project in there, and one at about six and a half million dollars. You know, a lot of times we'll do a project acceptance at the end, you know, which is necessary, you did a couple of those, matter of fact, last week. But the department's doing some extremely noteworthy work, and it's, you know, we had the opportunity tonight to be able to spend a little time, so you and the public can kind of see where these dollars are going and get a handle visually what the scope is. And Kent does the day-to-day construction management of these projects with the contractors. Maria Sarah, our CIP engineer, engineering manager, manages all the engineers, all the consultants, and helps direct Kent on issues related to the engineering side of these projects. So, we've got a team that's working really hard to deliver for you, and thought this was a good opportunity to show you some of your product. Kent, thanks.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I am not Steve Worley, I'm Kent McHugh, your construction manager, and I'm here tonight to present these four projects that were completed during the twenty-one, 2021 construction season. So, the first one is the process water reuse facility, the irrigation pump station, or we call it the IPS. There was an existing one in the small square, more towards the middle or to, just to the right. There was an existing pump station there, it was basically at the end of its life, it was maxed out capacity-wise, needed to be replaced and upgraded, be ready for future development. We built the second one off to the left there, and as the project progressed, we are setting ourselves up really good for the future to be able to expand this facility and take in more processors and more processed water and so forth, and be able to accommodate the industry. This was the pit that was dug to build the pump station itself. It is actually, the biggest share of it is underground, pumps, gravity feeds out of the ponds into the pump station, and then from there, it is pumped out into the fields. This is some of the false work or the farm work to build the underground. Basically, it's like a bunker almost. This is the location, you can get an idea of the magnitude. The pond to the right is a hundred and ten million gallon pond, and that's the size of the pump station. We did reline the one end of the hundred and ten million gallon reservoir to be able to accommodate the outfall to get the water to gravity feed to the pump station. That's what they're showing there in the bottom right-hand corner. This is still under construction when they were redoing the line here. This is the, basically the pumps down in the bottom of the bunker itself. This is what we had for change orders, basically works out to be six point six percent of the total cost. Anytime, as a rule of thumb, you try to get it, keep them under ten, and if you get around five, you're doing really good on a project of this magnitude. The next project is Columbia East Force Main, so we, about three years ago, we built a pump station, the Columbia East Pump Station, on the corner of Commercial and the Colodus Highway. And we built it first, it basically sat there dormant for almost three years. This project tied, excuse me, tied the pump station into the reuse facility. We put in almost ten miles of high density, high-density polyethylene pipe, sixteen inch, from this facility all the way out to the reuse facility. This was just the very beginning. This was mostly funded by EDA. It was all, we ran actually two lines being ready for future development and growth. The pump station was sized accordingly as well.
Sorry, just one quick question if I interrupt.
Sure.
Were the two lines put in there for redundancy, in case one of them goes down? Or is it, was it in place for?
It's twofold. It's for capacity and redundancy. So, if you, if you can, depending on who's got the higher flows, you can direct it towards the other line, or you can, and shut the other one down if there's a problem, or you can still, so if you had just one line and you had something happen, you're going to put everybody out, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, all these, there's basically no joints in this pipe whatsoever, it's all fusion welded together, so it's, it's very hardy when it comes to long-term, being able to not have to go out there and repair this thing a lot. This was, it ran up, up through Commercial up to Capitol, and then went north all the way to Foster Wells. This is what we had for final cost. I think we were at five point nine percent with this one. So, this project, the Grimway Farms used to go to our municipal plant, and so this project basically took them out of the municipal plant and put them into the reuse facility after the Columbia East Force Main was done and the pump station was commissioned. This is just basically a diversion box that sends it over to the reuse facility in lieu of going to the municipal plant. We do have the option to be able to do either or if there's a problem. This one, there was no change orders, and that's your total cost. And the last project is the modifications. This was, once everything was completed with these other two projects and the pump station, this was to tie that line into our facility and be able to just pump it straight into a pond. Right now, it was right going straight to the screens facility. The only time we really use the screens is if we're pumping out into the field itself. This just tied it back over to the eight million gallon reservoir for the winter storage. And again, we use a lot of the HDPE pipe. And there's your total cost with less than one percent change orders. Questions?
Any questions or comments from our council members? And Mayor Pretam Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you for showing some of the details here. I'm not sure the community understands exactly how important this is for the economy of Pasco, and how long, how long of a road this has already been down to the fact that we finally got a deal. Maxed out in capacity of a number of people we could serve, number of companies we could serve a few years ago. Sold the last plots in the, out there in the, uh, the space available at the port. And this has been just a huge economic driver for Pasco, and it's, we kind of ran it into the ground, is my understanding, and it's really important that we're finally getting those redundancies, and we're finally getting the facility back up and running and ready for more capacity as we continue to expand. This is lots of jobs in this community, and lots of property value, and lots of just growth and economic activity in our area. So, I'm, yeah, I'm excited to continue to see these things happen and finally get us back to where quality facilities that we should have. So, looks great, and thank you for the presentation.
Sure. And getting Grimway out of our municipal plant increases that capacity, so that's a big plus.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Roach or Councilmember Serrano?
None here. I just appreciate that what I'm hearing is just a one percent cost variance from what you had bid this at, so well done staying within the parameters and staying close to home.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mayor Pretam, any other questions or comments, or are you ready for a motion?
Ready to make a motion.
All right, it's okay. Let's go ahead.
All right, and I think I need to take these one at a time if that's correct, so we'll be, I'll read the first motion. So, I move to approve resolution number four, one, five, two, accepting work performed by Apollo Inc. under contract for the irrigation pump station project.
Second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Pretam Maloney and seconded by Councilmember Milne. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Second one.
I move to approve resolution number four, one, five, three, accepting work performed by DW Excavating Inc. under contract for this Columbia East Force Main project.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mayor Pretam Maloney and seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
I move to approve resolution number four, one, five, four, accepting work performed by C and E Trenching LLC under contract for the Grimway connection to Columbia East project.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pretam Maloney, seconded by Councilmember Gumples. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
I move to approve resolution number four, one, five, five, accepting work performed by DW Excavating Inc. under contract for the process water reuse facility pipe modifications project.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Council, Mayor Pretam Maloney, seconded by Councilmember Gumples. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. And with that, we move on to item ten, any unfinished business, none listed. Item eleven, new business, none listed. Item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. City Manager Dave Zabel.
Good evening again, Mayor Council, and thank you. Just a couple announcements, just to let you know, we did have our first listening session last week. It was hosted by the Pasco Chamber. So, that was last Thursday morning. Mayor Barajas was there. Had a good turnout. I want to say probably less staff, about thirty-five business owners in the room, and we had some good feedback. Have a list of about a dozen things to share with you. Not tonight, not tonight, but later. And then also to make you aware that this Thursday, the twenty-fourth, is our virtual community listening forum. So, right now, we do, very few people signed up at this point in time, so want to, anybody listening that can't make one of our in-person functions on the third or the seventh of March, if you're interested in providing some input to council in advance of their goal-setting retreat, that'd be a good opportunity to do so virtually. And so, we're hopeful to get a little bit more folks signed up for that meeting, and, and council certainly be welcome to sign up for it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, City Manager. Yes, I did hear a lot of great feedback on that forum. A lot of business, businesses were extremely happy that we're willing to hear them out and giving them the opportunity to speak as well. I do also want to mention the twenty-fourth is the point in time count. Pasco Tri-City Suspending Chamber of Commerce is needing volunteers, if any of our staff or anybody that lives here in Pasco is, has the time to volunteer and help count some of our homeless individuals. This is again to measure the services that we need to provide them. So, again, reach out to Tri-City Suspending Chamber of Commerce if you'd like to sign up and volunteer for the point in time count, and again, that's the twenty-fourth, so this Thursday. And with that, we move on to item thirteen, executive session, none listed tonight. And with that, we adjourn this, our meeting tonight. I closed it too soon. City council meeting has reconvened, and it is now seven forty-six. And with that, we will see you next Monday. Have a good night.
Have a good night.